I would like to call the November 18th, 2020 virtual meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Regular Board Meeting to order. May I have a roll call, Mary?
Yes, Gallois.
I'm here.
Peyton Howell.
Here.
Figueroa.
Here.
Rego.
She, where did she go?
She stepped away from her computer.
Sorry, why are you calling me?
Yeah.
I'm also looking for my readers. I'm here.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Ting Pao Pung.
Here.
Weidemann.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Could everyone please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. That is the state America. In two thousand and twenty. Which is in France, one nation under God.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We are going to take a moment of silence for DJ Lash, a Fenton freshman who passed away this week. DJ was a person with a smile and spirit that radiated in every environment she entered. There are no words that can adequately express our deepest sorrow for the loss of DJ Lash. Please keep the Lash family in your thoughts and prayers. James, please read our Fenton mission, beliefs, and bison way statements.
He's on mute.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our mission statement, cultivate successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Belief statement, successful, professional learners thrive when we champion innovative teaching and engaged learning. School and home collaborate effectively. We provide a safe, secure, and caring environment. We infuse cultural emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning community. We prepare students for civic duties. The bison way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. We move on to the board member appreciation. James?
Sure. Board, I hope you know that we are truly appreciative of the work you are doing, especially during these challenging times called COVID. We truly appreciate the support and resolve of our Fenton priorities during the pandemic, which is three things, safety and wellness, learning and communication. You've also played a role in regards to making sure our students are fed and have internet connectivity. Also, our staff feel safe and supported. And lastly, our community is informed and supported via food and toy drives, safety information, connectivity resources. In addition, this board initiated and supported the strategic plan, Portrait of a Graduate, Equity Audit, the famous Facility Assessment, and exploring a possibility for a building referendum, to name future major events. These are just a few things that you guys have spearheaded and led the district in. For this board, thank you, thank you. We appreciate you.
All right. Well, thanks. Thanks so much, James. Now we move on to my favorite part, the student recognition. And James, again, that's you.
Yep. Real quick, we would like to recognize Fenton sophomore Victor Vasquez for qualifying for the state in cross-country. As you all know, due to COVID, there are no state competitions this year. Okay, however, we still want to celebrate Victor's hard work and dedication to the cross-country team and to Fenton. Here is a video of Victor and his coaches, Coach Fritsch and Coach Erhardt. Jim, take it away.
We'd like to thank the board for honoring our state qualifier this year. It was a kind of a crazy year, but we're fortunate to get our season in. So we look forward to the future that we have with our young athlete here. So without short.
What happened? Yeah, what happened is right.
It's a little laggy. It's coming.
We'd like to. We'd like to thank the board for honoring our state qualifier this year. It was a kind of a crazy year, but we're fortunate to get our season in. So we look forward to the future that we have with our young athlete here. So without short or without. Any less of introduction, we introduce our state qualifier, Victor Vasquez.
Um, it was pretty fun. It was a pretty fun season, even though with all this pandemic going on. But I did want to think everybody participated, who I got along with, who I could go along and train with and race with.
A lot of hard work and dedication by Victor this year over the summer. A lot of times he's out there running by himself doing workouts. So he worked hard for what he got and he's well deserved.
Perfect.
That's our Victor Sanchez qualifier, once again, for our state cross-country.
Okay, thank you. That's very good. James, do we have any requests for public comments?
Yes, we do. We have eight.
Okay, as a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker with a limited limit of 30 minutes per topic. Superintendent Nantanko will read the public comments received in chronological order. James, please.
Sure. The following comments will be read as submitted. Inappropriate words will be replaced with the word expletive. Okay, expletive. November 17th, this is from Ms. Rebecca Bohm. By now, you're probably sick of hearing from me, but as I watch COVID cases increase to record record numbers day after day, it is becoming increasingly obvious that we will be completing this semester and at least starting next semester with a remote learning schedule. It is even more important that we tweak the existing remote schedule to maximize our students' learning experience. We no longer need to adjust our schedule to cater a hybrid schedule. This is not happening anytime soon. We do need to ensure that our students are attending classes five days a week and going to school full-time, just like other schools. This districts in the area are doing. I was speaking to a friend whose daughter attends Downers Grove South High School. Not only is she attending school five days a week, they require that students are dressed, not pajamas, and are sitting upright. She sees each of her teacher each day and participates in class, then has homework, just like she was attending school in person. The story is similar from friends who, from high school students in Villa Park, Addison, Oak Park, and Oak Park. The students at Fenton deserve the same opportunities as these other students in this area have. I think everyone understands why we are keeping our students at home. What I don't understand is why our remote schedule is so significantly different than other schools in the area. As I have said before, I would like to see a revised remote schedule that reflects the bell schedule. I would like to see classes offered on Mondays, and I would like to see the entire day, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, used for classes and group projects, just as it would be when students are learning in person. This is what other schools in the area are doing, and that is what Fenton students deserve. Thank you for your time. Next one is. Comment is from Talia Anguino. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a graduate of Fenton's Fenton class of 2013. As representative of the Fenton Advocacy Network, to remind you all that our community is invested in the future of diversity, equity, and inclusion at Fenton. We will continue to reiterate our goals and demand until they are met. We will not stop until the board actively engages with the community to work to dismantle oppressive systems. You are elected to not only represent us, but protect us, especially those who are marginalized for their gender and/or race. We are the Fenton Advocacy Network. We are centered on advocacy for our traditionally marginalized students and education surrounding hate, bias, discrimination, and racism experienced or witnessed at Fenton. To reverse this trend of inequity beginning on the board's level, we need open communication between the community and the board. Therefore, we will begin the conversation. As part of a future diversity action plan, we demand bullet point one, a recommendation of the approved diversity and equity statement to include different identities of students. The creation of a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee that includes students and community members. The implementation of mandatory diversity, equity, and inclusion training for all students and staff. Having regular diversity, equity, and inclusion workshops for students and staff. Assembling designated spaces for marginalized groups. Hiring a counselor and mentor specifically for marginalized groups. Analysis of trends in discipline, referral data, attendance, and academic success. Post-media, virtual, and physically, and support Black and Brown communities through both statements and pictures. Creation a zero tolerance policy for acts of discrimination. Attending events and classes of your current students. Scheduling speakers and authors of diverse backgrounds to speak. Hosting a Q and A with the community, present your views and conduct a dialogue. Aside from other demands, we are inviting the board to work with us and be actively anti-racist and genuinely empathetic in the way that alumni and current students need. Your support is invaluable to our mission. As part of the Fenton Advocacy Network's goal, we have chosen to share stories with you that testify to the discrimination of all kinds of Fenton, past and present. We are asking you to open your hearts and put yourselves in these author's shoes. Please realize that the authors behind these words are, are or were students who felt unsafe silence in the press. These students' experiences are what you raised in your equity statement. We will be holding a future town hall over Zoom to continue the conversation. We are hoping you will be a part of the equity journey to make Fenton a more supportive and welcoming environment for all, so that future Fenton graduates will not feel as though their misfortune is the product of our inaction. Thank you. The next public comment is from Jessica Bangle. The following stories are testaments regarding acts of discrimination witnessed or experienced at Fenton High School, which were collected by the Fenton Advocacy Network. In quotes, "I was told I wasn't Ivy League materials by an adult working at Fenton after I had been very vulnerable with my post-high school plans, dreams." The adult then proceeded to tell that I would be better off just applying to a community college, but later that week told a white male with a 3.2 average GPA to not limit himself and apply to an Ivy League. He chose. "I am a Hispanic female with a 4.2 average GPA. I think out of everyone who knows me, I know myself and my abilities better." Submitted anonymously. Okay. Second paragraph, "I had struggled with medical issues and home issues through high school. My family had no money, and I wasn't sure if we would have a home for much longer. However, I worked hard to maintain my GPA. I heard such positive things about the staff members that assisted with the with college navigation. I decided to see her for assistance with my college applications and financial aid. I was told by her that I would never make it in college, any college. I left her office feeling incredibly discouraged and doubted myself and my worth for a long time. I persevered. I am now a four-point-old college student, submitted anonymously. I met with a staff member to talk about college. I wanted to go to medical school, and I sat there ranked high up in my class. She told me my best choice was to major in dance, submitted anonymously. I know a teacher in particular who basically cornered a student which is unprofessional, and other teachers defended him. Whole time, that student was having an anxiety attack, and nobody made the effort to give her time to breathe and calm down, submitted anonymously. My teacher would tell me to smile more often because I'm a girl, submitted anonymously. I just come back to class after being gone for a few days at hospital. My teacher purposely called me to answer a question. He then proceeded to laugh in front of the class and say, oh, right, you weren't the here. He deliberately threw away my completed assignments while the outgoing boys around me got 100% on their assignments that were only partially incomplete, submitted anonymously." The fourth public comment is from Jamie Menard. "The following stories are testaments regarding acts of discrimination witnessed or experienced at Fenton High School, which were collected by the Fenton Advocacy Network. I'm currently a junior. There is so much discrimination at Fenton, but people don't seem to realize it, especially in class or online through social media. It's the way our class work, and no one seems to be a big deal out of it when it really is. I don't know the faculty." Could you turn that off? We just started. "I don't think the faculty at Fenton understand the amount of discrimination that happened at Fenton either. I'll hear students being disrespected and use social slurs every day to the point where it's normalized. I've been called certain things that make me uncomfortable, people referring to me as certain things. Slash people. Some kids use the R slur as well as the F slur. People are so judgmental too. People like to discriminate against the LGBT community. Personally, it makes me upset as I am an ally to the community, which is why I'm writing this right now, submitted anonymously. I was on the speech team for four years. I always chose scripts for events that were close to my heart and my Asian culture. One coach would try to steer me away from scripts like these and chose scripts that were more universal. One time, a dog was in one script, and they asked, are all Asian people afraid of dogs, submitted anonymously. As a parent with two Black students at Fenton students, I believe that there are inequities in the representation of students of color. There is a need for this segregated curriculum and commitment to diversity. The teaching staff, submitted Dr. Sunal Lewis. "The amount of Muslim terrorist jokes I have heard since I have started at Fenton High School is uncountable, submitted anonymously. It's hard to really be yourself at school when everyone has an opinion and shares it. It's hard to know where you fit in because you can't see past all the bullying and homophobia at our school. I think it's really unfortunate that our world has come to this. I honestly feel more comfortable with e-learning because I don't have to worry about being called names in the hallway. I don't have to worry about anyone taking pictures and sending them around the school. I don't have to worry about anyone sharing their thoughts on who I decide to be with, submitted anonymously." This next one is from Xavier Pete. "The following stories are testaments regarding acts of discrimination witnessed or experienced at Fenton High School, which were collected by the Fenton Advocacy Network. I am a trans guy, and a peer refuses to gender me correctly because he agrees with everything name of a person says. I was sick of this, and the people like this only care about expletive. I told him I have an expletive to which he responded, one would have to see it or believe it, which is clearly implying that he must see expletive order for me to be a man, which is incredibly creepy also upon asking clarification. So you are asking me expletive. He replied with not my words, but interpreted how you wish. On other occasion, his mockingly made assuming gender pronoun jokes, and his best friends thinks that gay people only make up 1% of the population and therefore do not deserve rights which the peer presumably agrees with, submitted anonymously. As a male part of the LGBTQ community last year, I was a freshman and was going to start gym second semester right before changing for my gym was in place. I got asked by a staff member if I would like to change in the nurse's office. I knew the reason why was because some males didn't feel comfortable with me in the dressing room. At first, I didn't understand why, but I said yes to changing in the nurse's office. Then later on, I realized the reason on why, submitted anonymously. Although I never had any specific instances, I always felt like outside of a few spaces, I had no place to be able to truly express and figure out my non-binary identity. It took me going to college and becoming an officer for the Pride Alliance to even realize I wasn't cis. I know people who weren't allowed to be able to use bathrooms or locker rooms that they were comfortable with. I always wonder why I felt so weird in the women's locker room. Hint, it's because I'm non-binary. I don't fit in the mold of gender, and I never felt the room to express that at Fenton, submitted Jupiter. I had a couple of friends afraid to come out because other students usually make jokes that referred to them as expletive or really feminine or expletive. It made it really hard for them to feel welcome because these jokes always held a negative connotation, submitted anonymously. We ask not to infer any motivation of any firsthand accounts shared by the Fenton Advocacy Network other than a willingness to share nor inferred identity of any individuals. These are not intended to be accusatory or reflect bias, rather to reflect greater Fenton experience of the contributors. Number six, sixth comment, this is from Mr. Marshall Suback. "Fenton Board of Education members, this is Marshall Suback. This year, Fenton canceled PSAT tests for juniors due to the pandemic. Each year, Fenton juniors take the PSAT in October. For those board members who had children that graduated from Fenton, your child took the PSAT at Fenton as junior. PSAT was given to juniors in October by many of the surrounding high schools. It can be done and done safely. Why not? At Fenton, Fenton provided the SAT in October to seniors with no known problems or COVID outbreak. The good news is that College Board has given an alternative of January 26, 21, for when Fenton can give the PSAT to juniors." Why is it important? The PSAT is important because it is how students become eligible for the National Merit Scholars and become eligible for CERN scholarship. There are specific scholarships for African Americans, trans, and Latino students that students become eligible for by taking the PSAT as a junior. As a board, you are looking at equity and fairness for all students. Canceling the PSAT and not rescheduling it goes directly to equity and fairness. I am asking you to do the right thing for all students and have a chance to be a National Merit Scholar, and those students and these scholars to go on to college to make a motion and direct administration to the host of PSAT at Fenton on January 26, 2020. The board has the authority to do this. It is a policy decision. We have plenty of smart, highly-paid people at Fenton who can probably plan and figure out how to give the test safely for juniors on January 26, 2021. As for the remote learning plan, it's time to pivot. As I said before, there is not enough instructional time with the teachers. The teachers have to take some responsibility for this problem as well. They can advocate for a better remote plan. There's been absolutely no data to show that the current plan is working. The staff has done surveys, the staff, parents, and students, but no measurable data on how much the students' learning and comprehension is behind. This learning gap has to be measured by the teachers and reported back to the board. Administration and the teachers have to start planning now as how are the students going to make up any gaps in learning and comprehension. Thank you. The seventh public comment is from Patrick Escobar. Escobedo, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Patrick Escobedo. "President Weidemann and members of the board, my name is Patrick Escobedo, and I come before you tonight to say greetings and happy Thanksgiving from the FEA. During the unprecedented year, we are having it is more important than ever to consider that for which we are thankful, and the FEA is very thankful for our students. For the FEA, working with our student has been a saving grace from the isolation that COVID has brought about. They have kept us connected to them and each other, and they have helped see us through the most trying period. The deep purpose we find in educating our students has taken on a new meaning this year, and it has reaffirmed our strong desire to keep them a safe and loving place for them to learn. We ask that the board to join in the community by affirming the safety and inclusion of all our students in Fenton, especially our students of color, LGBTQ plus students, undocumented students, and students from mixed-status families. The board's affirmation to this and would send a strong message of love and support to the very students who are the reason we are all here tonight. In addition to being especially grateful for our students this year, the FEA is also very thankful to be able to deliver our message to you tonight. Communication is perhaps that which both makes us human and makes civilization possible. It is what allows for creativity, innovation, and healing. Our ability to communicate can bring us together and allow us to share our hopes and dreams. But communication has two essential components, those that deliver the message and those that receive it. Month after month, year after year, our association, concerned parents, and empowered current and former students have come before the board with impassioned pleas, calls for understanding, and challenges to be the leaders we all know you can be. And disappointingly, we have all been met with the same well-silenced. It hurts to bring before the school board an issue about which you feel strongly, about which you are worried, and about which you care, and to receive no response. The lack of response, therefore, becomes the response, and one which sends the message one which sends the message that your words don't matter. I know the board does not want to send such a message to its constituents, stakeholders and students. I therefore call upon the board to break this practice by taking time to follow up with those that submitted public comments in an authentic and substantial manner. Please know, I am not asking the board to engage with everyone who makes a comment during the meeting, but rather to reach out to the, reach out with a phone call or an email after a meeting uh, to validate the concern expressed and to honor the time and energy taken to express them. This act would send a powerful message of inclusion and care to all those who come before you to speak. Concerned parents, the Fenton Advocacy Network, current students, teachers and staff members, all of those who make up the Fenton community. In closing, thank you on behalf of the FEA for the opportunity to address the board and we look forward to hearing from you soon. Happy Thanksgiving, Patrick Escobedo, FEA president. Our last public comment is from Omar Marin in regards to the Equity Task Force and Equity. In general, I think this Equity Task Force is great first step in trying to fill the holes Fenton has been in regards to equity. However, to the boards and any member of this task force listening, I must stress the importance of actually listening to the correct people about the correct things. When it comes down to making decisions for the population that do not feel welcome at Fenton, the perspective and suggestions of the people that can speak from their uh, identity and firsthand experiences hold all the value as opposed to someone who cannot. For example, when discussing or enacting any plans to ameliorate the environment for the, for the Latin American community of Fenton, the voices and perspective of people like my old Matt, old Matt staff name from Little Village, I might add, should never be questioned by the likes of someone who cannot identify with the population, X, X, a white peer. Uh, the same could be said about the LGBTQ and staff member name being the voice who, who holds value over others. I only stress this, uh, because it's bound to happen. One white teacher on the task force told my Mexican friends that they do not feel safe while they, they attend Fenton last year. You guys tell me if I'm supposed to think someone like that has the best interests of people that looks like me. Additionally, I would like to do, to mention that the potential of implementing SEL lessons centered on racism and homophobia, transphobia during the bison time. I was a senior mentor last year and I can say from personal experience that there, it, there is more than enough room to squeeze a lesson or two on how to identify these problems, support victims and addressing the problems as a whole. It's clearly a big problem at the school per people who have attended and the tools are already set in place. Lastly, it's pretty obvious you guys should be reaching out to the people of these populations, members of the community, things like that. Real change will be, will be minimal if no one, no one reaches out to the actual people that are affected by the current environment. If the dialogue remains between administrators and members of the board, you guys will not be serving an under, underrepresented community. You will merely be working in one. That is the end of the public comments.
All right. Thank you, James. Um, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank Rebecca, Talia, Jessica, Jamie, Xavier, Marshall, Patrick and Omar for their comments. Um, thank you for your comments and we really appreciate the time you took to, uh, prepare these, uh, comments. I would also like to reiterate and make it clear that each, each and every board member here is unequivocally committed to and has always embraced inclusion, diversity and equity for LGBTQ students of color, undocumented students and low income students and students with, uh, disabilities here at Fenton High School. Um, and then also regarding the PSAT, PSAT will take place on January 26th as planned. Again, thank you to all who, uh, submitted their comments. Now we move on to the consent agenda. Uh, do we have any questions and or comments regarding the consent agenda?
President Wedeman, we will need to go over the District 100 informational items first. You skipped an item.
I'm sorry. You are right. I see that right here. Then let's move. I'm sorry. Let's do the, yeah. If you can, uh, take that, James.
Absolutely.
100 informational items.
That happens to me all the time as well. Uh, we have four items here. Uh, we're going to do a COVID update, uh, 19 update, uh, followed by a learn, our learning plan, then our equity reports, uh, and this time it'll be resorted of justice with our deans and our rap, ramp presentation by our assistant principal, Mrs. Roberts. So first up here real quick, uh, COVID update. Um, you guys know this, you, you, there's a COVID surge, right? It's, it's the second wave. Uh, it is not good. Uh, the numbers are concerning. Uh, and once again, it's not good. As a reminder, uh, to the board, I meet weekly with the DuPage County Public Health Department and twice a week with the DuPage Superintendent. So we're all informed. We're all listening from the scientists and the experts. Uh, we discuss the health metrics and other COVID related topics during our meeting. Now let's look at some numbers here real quick. Next slide, please. This first slide is the new COVID death updates up 260% since October 1st. This is alarming. This is a concern. You could see that it's, it's projected to go upwards, um, in, in, in a couple of months if we don't slow it down. If communities do not slow it down and take action. COVID, if you don't know, COVID-19 is now the third leading cause of the United States, uh, hard to seize and cancer being number one and two, uh, respectively. Next slide, please. Along with the numbers of deaths, hospitalization, uh, numbers are also concerning. Hospital beds are important. Uh, it has surpassed, uh, the hospitalization numbers, uh, in Illinois last spring. Um, you, you've heard the governor, um, and, and the experts there that this is truly a concern. If you haven't heard of the Mayo Clinic and I believe it's in nuclear Wisconsin, they're out of beds there already. So there's a concern for Illinois. These are the things that we talk about at our meetings. Next slide, please. If the trend continues, okay, um, uh, hospitalization and ICU occupancy could be five times higher than the spring wave. So we have to keep an eye on that. I'll continue to, uh, to report on this. Um, and you know, as you know, the state will take necessary action if they have to and that could be, we don't know yet. Uh, more mitigation and a possibility of, of, of a shutdown. Um, you've seen this slide before. Uh, now we're transitioning. That was the state data that was presented. Now we're going to DuPage. This is basically the DuPage County COVID-19 school metrics that all schools look at here in DuPage. All six metrics, all six metrics on the right-hand side are in red. This is the second week in a row that it's in red. What does it mean when it's in red? That shows it's substantial transmission, community transmission in our community. That is not good. Okay. That's the highest level there. Uh, the first row, if you go across Illinois Department of Public Health, county level risk, we're at, we're at substantial. That's the highest level. Second row, it says new cases per 100,000 per week. That's individuals. We're at 429 people per 100,000 per week. If you don't remember, a, a month ago, when I used to present this to you, we were at 50, 75. It was hard for us to break 100. So you're looking at what crippling of, of these numbers. The third column, it says weekly case counts per trend. Um, week, we have been taking, DuPage Public Health Department has been taking data for 44, 45 weeks now. And if, uh, the first line there says from week 43 to 44, an increase of 40% of case count, uh, of cases. Week 44 to 45, which is this week, it's up 37%. Now let's look at the youth rate, the next row there, under 19, week 43 to 44, 55% increase. Week 44 and 45, once again, this week it's up 69%, okay? Weekly test positivity, uh, for one time we were into 15% here, um, 12.8 as of yesterday. Um, again, red and our neighboring, uh, counties are, are also in substantial. Next slide, please. Now we're going to drill down a little bit. So you have the data here. This one is COVID-19 cases per youth group, basically from zero to 19 years old. It's obvious there that our, the red and green are leading the chart there. You see the spike. All the youths are moving up. That's the trend there. As you could see, it's a nice, almost a parabola there going up. Uh, our, our five to 14 and 15 to 19 leads the number there. Okay. Next slide, please. Another way to look at it is a bar, bar graph there. Far right, the highest one is our 15 to 19. That would be our high school students, followed by the middle, uh, bar graph there, that would be our middle schoolers. So how does it look like for all age group from zero to 80 plus there? What's the trend? It's obvious there. It's all going up, right? Across all age groups. Leading the way from here, tiny graph there is the 20 to 39, the blue line, followed by, I believe that's a yellow 40 to 59. Okay. Then you see the youth behind her. Next slide, please. This is COVID cases by municipalities. Uh, Bensonville is at 1241, okay? Number 11 on the chart. Um, we're, we're not in the top 10, but we're number 11. And Wooddale is 737 on the lower end, 737 COVID cases. Next slide, please. DuPage as a whole, uh, the, by date, uh, the daily test positivity, there it is. Um, yeah, 1115, 12.4%, the 14th of November, uh, 14% and so forth. Uh, so the numbers are way over where we wanted. We wanted underneath five. This is way over five. Um, we're averaging about 13%. Next slide, please. Let's drill down some more to our own community. This is Wooddale. Wooddale right now is about 17%, okay? Uh, COVID, uh, positivity rate. Next slide, please. Let's look at Bensonville. Bensonville is hovering between 19 and 18% higher than Wooddale. Okay. This is alarming. Okay. This is alarming. Not good numbers. Okay. So how are DuPage County High Schools in our Upstate Eight Conference? Upstate Eight is our sport conference. Where are they at right now? Uh, let's look at the, the majority are, uh, are in remote. District 87, Glenbard with four high school. It's in remote. District 88 with two high schools in remote. Uh, District 94, West Chicago, District 99, Downers. There's two high schools there, Fenton, obviously, Lake Park, Elmers. Why did I put U46? Because they're part of our, uh, our conference. They have five high schools also in remote and East Aurora. Um, goes without saying, District 2 and 7, our middle school feeders are also in remote. Next slide, please. Winter sport, okay? IHSA has pause winter sports, uh, uh, which includes, um, let me see if I can remember, uh, uh, basketball, bowling, gymnastics, cheer, dance. I believe that's it. Okay. They put a pause on it. What does a pause mean? That means no practices, no competition. Just as FYI board, our Upstate Eight Conference canceled basketball prior to the IHSA uh, pause. As you know, you read in the newspaper, there's some back and forth between IHSA, the governor, IDPH as well. So right now, we believe it's going to be canceled. We want sports to happen, but it's got to be done in a safe way, possibly later down, down spring, uh, at a later time. Tier three mitigation, uh, when you hear the word mitigation board, that really applies to businesses. Okay. Does it not apply to school? Tier three mitigation starts on Friday, 1201. As the governor, uh, stated, it can, uh, it includes retail, personal care service, health and fitness, hotels, manufacturing, bars and restaurants, meeting areas, social events, gathering, recreational activities, theaters, casinos, cultural institute, and again, does not apply to schools. And lastly there, DuPage County Public Health recommends remote learning at this time. Next slide, please. So what does that mean for Fenton? What is our learning plan? Five things to report here. Uh, due to the COVID surge and recommendation from the DuPage Public Health Department, Fenton will remain in remote learning for at least the remainder of the semester. Number two, we will continue to allow very small groups of students to enter the building for support because they need support. You guys know that. That's our ESL, our special ed, students that have connectivity, uh, or wifi issues, ninth grade on track, engagement, supervised remote learning and tutoring. We will, number three, we'll continue to work with, with our remote and hybrid task force um, in regards to more contact time, um, that we'll try to pivot to is, uh, second semester. Number four, we will continue planning for students to return to hybrid second semester. As you guys heard, uh, in the news, there's vaccines from Pfizer, um, um, and another, um, biotech group, I think it's called Moderna on the way, but that's months away from mass distribution. But we need to continue to plan for that. How will that look like? Um, parents, would, would they rather second semester, um, be remote or, or hybrid? But we're going to take it, we're going to chunk it. We're going to make sure it's safe, uh, to return to our school. And number five, most importantly, we're going to continue to monitor hea- health department metrics and advisories. I will pause there real quick. If you could go back, Jim, please. And give a chance for the board to just soak this in. I know that was so, there was a lot of that. I could have put more data. I limited myself to 10 slides. Uh, so you have that, uh, you see that all the time. I'm sure you guys listened to the news, but I just want to make sure it's thorough. So I went global, all US, Illinois, DuPage, our municipalities here and Fenton High School. And once again, thank for the board. I mean, it's, it's, it's safety has to come first. You guys reiterate that over and over and I'm, I'm glad you guys are, are solid with that resolving the, the priority for school district.
Can I ask a question about number three?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so there's, there's been talk about like increasing the amount of, um, student teacher time. Is that still, is that in the works?
Yes, yes, Patty. That is definitely working. I know Yovin and Michelle are working very hard with both the remote and hybrid task force to make that a reality. Uh, principal is there, but do you want to add anything to that?
I know, uh, we've talked to our teachers and, uh, there are so, obviously some that are um, concerned about contact time and there are others that feel that the contact time is, is, uh, is good. So we're going to try and balance that and make sure that, uh, you know, we're not overwhelming with screen time and, and make sure that we have um, students in there. So, you know, obviously, uh, uh, the first thing we think of is that this is a pandemic and so that's what we work from. So I mean, it's not a, you know, this isn't in-person learning where we have that opportunity. So we, we want to make sure that we're, we're mindful of everything and empathetic as we, uh, as we make some of these schedules and make some of these changes. So, um, you know, the other piece to Mr. Rantango, if I can say it's, you know, I think I said this before. This isn't about, you know, you can't just pivot and go in a different direction. There's 1,400 kids, 200 staff members, you know, families, communities that, that look at certain schedules. And so we have to make sure that we take everything into account and not just, um, and not just move, uh, right away because it's, it's, it's not that easy to do. Uh, it's like turning an aircraft carrier, as I like to say. Um, you know, you don't want to turn it too quickly or 5,000 sailors are going to get sick real quick. So we need to make sure that we're, um, we're balancing that and that's what we're doing. And Ms. Papa Nikalau and her work with Highlander has been fantastic in, in segregating the data and making sure that we're heading in the right direction. So.
Could I ask a question? Um, I'm sorry, I, I had to cut out of the last board meeting because I wasn't feeling well. Was that something that was discussed? Was it, uh, sorry, I hit the button again. Was that something that was discussed at the last boarding, board meeting? That there was a possibility of adding, um, more teacher student time or?
Yes, Julia, I think that's been a constant communication that there is, um, concerned that, that there's enough, not enough contact time with the teachers face-to-face synchronous learning. That was.
Uh, yes, I understand that, but I, so that's just something that you guys have been, uh, discussing and with the possibility of adding if it's advantageous.
Yeah.
And with the teachers union and if it's, okay.
Of course. Yeah. I mean, uh, the collaboration is, I mean, this is not a top-down decision. Um, we're obviously looking at the surveys that come in and we're taking a look at it. And, and we're looking at other schools, uh, you know, many of them are not going every single period of the day. Um, it's just too much screen time as we go. Uh, Ms. Rantango is obviously, he's twice a week with superintendents dealing with this. Ms. Papa Nikalau meets several times, uh, I, I meet several times a week with other principals from other buildings. So this is a constant conversation. No, nobody has it figured out. There's, you know, there's classes that. This is a constant conversation, nobody has it figured out, there's, you know, there's classes that are running twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes for some areas. You know, we're going six, it's almost sixty minutes. In some areas, very few schools, if any, are actually going every single day with every single period. Because again, it's just too long of a period of time for screen time, I mean, this is. The current anecdotal data, if you take a look out there when you look under education pieces. The leadership articles that we keep getting, keep telling us about, you know, making sure that with screen time, and it's not just for students, it's for staff too. You know, I like sharing a story about my wife, I mean, my wife's a teacher and eight, nine hours a day on that screen and it's, you know, it's taxing. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're empathetic, you know, and. And as I like to point out, oftentimes when I have this conversation, it's a pandemic. We're trying to make sure that we, you know, that we engage our students and make sure that they're healthy and safe. But we obviously care about their education, we want to make sure that we're going forward, but everybody is in the same boat, there are. Millions of kids that are in remote learning right now. So, you know, this isn't just a Fenton issue, this is a, this is a national worldwide issue that we're constantly dealing with and. We're gathering as much information as we can and we know more now than we did in June, in July, when we created this and, you know. We're going to keep looking at these and we're going to, you know, we have focus groups that are going on right now that Ms. Papa Nicolau has been doing, so. Yeah, it's definitely something that we want to make sure that we maintain, but we also want to be mindful that. You know, we don't have headaches and all these other things and have staff that are calling in sick because they're on the computer for. Numerous periods of time as well, so yeah, we're definitely, you know, we've heard our staff and we've heard. You know, some, you know, the data is there and we're definitely going to try and work in some more contact time, some more meaningful contact.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Good question. I was just thinking about this and. Yeah, I think you guys are definitely doing your best as far as the situation and. And working with what we have. But I think maybe in terms of, and I would propose this and see what the board thinks. So. Would it be possible or realistic? If you look at this strategically and you think about. You know, the time we've had. To work this remote two-point-o process. And you guys help me out here, administration wise, Yovan. Are we still in the data collecting stage? Or are we also collecting data? Analyzing it. Identifying areas of improvement or problems we might be able to identify, be able to fix it. And then maybe working towards that. I understand the ramifications with. You know, you've got a complex issue here. But what's the problem solving process that we have right now? So for example, we've talked about. Screen time, we've talked about. You know, contact teachers. But analyzing the data. Collecting it, right, we'll collect and analyzing it. And identifying areas where we can actually move towards making this remote point two-point-o better.
Okay, go ahead. Yep, and you can fill it in. I think we've been doing that kit, starting from the spring, right? We made sure we had a survey right after that spring semester, that's how two-point-o was created. We, and we collected data both from students, parents and teachers. As you remember, they wanted grades back, grades are back, they wanted more. Structure time, they need time to communicate with parents and students, they wanted more communication with at home, more support service. And that's how the two-point-o was created. I mean, data, you're always, you always want feedback, right? But you also got to sort and filter that feedback, is that like what Yovan was saying, is it? It's November, right? Is it really logistic to pivot? Like I reported, the remote and hybrid task force continue to need to fine tune what we have. This is the first time we've ever done this, as Yovan continues to hit with the pandemic, this is, we're all first-year teachers. We're all first-year board members in regards to the pandemic. And feedback is critical, we sort it, we work with the individuals or teachers or support staff. That, that work with our students on a daily basis, so we do pay. We do look at our data. We look at the solutions as a collective. Like, you know, not top-down, hey, look, what are you listening, what are you guys hearing in the classroom? What are you hearing, division leaders and so forth, so that's how we solve these issues. Go ahead, Principal Lazarevic.
Thanks, Mr. Antango, yes. I think we're all of the above, we're collecting data, we're analyzing data, we're. We're trying to sort it into the correct buckets to make sure that we're making good decisions, we're looking at problems of practice, we're looking at cycles of inquiry as terms of. You know, what is our root cause for some of the things that are going on, I mean, these are our normal practices during. During in-person learning, when we have every single kid in the building, but. It's even more important now to make sure we're looking at that, the problem that we run into now is that. There's no research out there in terms of what does long-term remote learning look like, so. We're just trying to make sure that we can get the pedagogy out there and make sure that our teachers are engaging it. And I will tell you that, you know, I was in classrooms early on in, you know, in the school year in late August, early September, and I've been in classrooms the last couple of weeks as well, I mean, all throughout the time, and I know Ms. Papa Nicolau. And division leaders have been doing this as well. And what it looked like in August is not what it looks like right now in November, I mean, it's very different, engagement is very different. I mean, our teachers are working with, I was just in a US history class the other day and. And they're looking at Padlet maps and they're, you know, I mean, and the kids are, I mean, it's flowing from the kids, they're like, oh yeah, I also found this National Geographic map that's really cool, you know. I mean, it's the, I would almost want to say collaboration partnership is even greater sometimes. With what's going on and our teachers do such a great job of building relationships that the students are comfortable with that. So kind of back to your question, yeah, we're constantly analyzing this, unfortunately, some of it is anecdotal data. You know, they're, you know. Looking at, you know, I made a joke, you know, with somebody that said. You know, are we looking at the success data, you know? And I kind of made a joke like, well, yeah, we don't have the nineteen eighteen success data from the last pandemic, so we can't see kind of what that looked like, so we can apply it here. You know, because, you know, I like to be cheeky occasionally and stuff like that, but. You know, we are constantly looking at data, we're looking at students and trying to figure out, trying to figure out how to. How to find success within our students and that's what they're doing, you know, their concern is very real about. Some of these students and we're as an institution are doing some things, and I have to tell you, our teachers are. Are there in the weeds with those kids and really, really working hard to make sure that our students are successful, so. I kind of made it long-winded, but we are looking at every aspect and we are collecting data and trying to analyze it and. You know, whether it's anecdotal or actually on the Likert scale, trying to figure out, you know, where that fits and. And Ms. Papa Nicolau has done such a great job with, you know, and getting this Highlander Institute, which has been huge in breaking down, because. You know, when you get twelve hundred kids that have anecdote data and are telling us stories and they're breaking it down by themes, it's. It's really, you know, for, you know, for our admin team, you know, we're small to that, we're trying to deal with other COVID issues and they're breaking it down and telling us. How the students, you know, what the students are saying, it's been really, really helpful for us and it's allowed us to try to. To move this ship a little bit to make sure that we're meeting all of our students. And again, the longer we do it this, the better and better we're going to continue to be and. You know, our next schedule that you're going to, you know, that we're working on right now. You know, you're going to see kind of some similarities between the hybrid and the in-person and you're going to see. You know, some contact time, but you're also going to see professional development time because it's still important and you're going to see. You know, social emotional learning time, which is still important for our students, so. We're trying to maintain those fundamentals, but yet still make sure that there's, you know, valuable contact time as we go forward.
I'd just like to add to it, I'll let Mrs. Papa Nicolau talk real quick. Just some concrete example of how you pivot, how you resolve issues. But there was, that's why we have like what I just reported. Small group support, special ed. That's solving an issue. Our connectivity, solving a particular issue. Our EL, solving a certain need for those, for those students. Our students that have issues with engagement. Solving another issues that, you know, as things come, we solve, we look at the data and result. This supervised remote learning is the latest. Tutoring after school at night school is another song, so. It's not like, okay, you let the ship go and let it go and watch it go down the horizon, no, you got to continue to paddle and steer that ship to move forward. Go ahead, Ms. Papa Nicolau.
No, I think you guys both covered it well, Kit, to answer, yes. Yes, we're beyond the collecting phase and into the analysis and problem solving phase, but. The collecting phase doesn't end, right, like it's cyclical, we continue, I think that's just what James and Yovan have been saying. We're already into our next round of collection through focus group. And we have our next design meeting with Highlander Institute where they've broken down the data and we're going to now. You know, consider our next design shifts and tweaks. You know, so we're already into a second round of. Problem solving design and we'll have another one in January and another one, so it's cyclical, it continues to happen. The collection, the analysis, the problem solving, the solution, so you know, I think we'll see. Some adjustments to file schedules like we've. Talked about, you know, we see other types of adjustments within the classroom and then we see other types of adjustments within our systems and support. So there's adjustments happening in all the various sectors of our organization and within our plan, so. Just keep working at it and keep listening, that's the key here, is we're trying to find more and more ways to listen. And listen really closely to our stakeholders. And our students and our teachers, they're the ones that are doing the hard work on this and the parents at home, you know, they're more.
She froze there.
I wanted to say something, I wanted to say something to my, my son's chiropractor, her daughter goes to Lake Park. And I just wanted to compliment our school a little bit, and I'm not saying that we don't have. Work that we need to do because I think, you know, all schools do, but. They have the so-called, you know, going to, going to every single class, you know, where they are supposed to follow their schedule. And, but that's not really working very well for them, you know, because. You know, you're following your schedule, but still her daughter has three hours in the middle of the day where she has absolutely nothing going on. So she's got lunch and then she's got study hall and then she's got gym, so she's sitting there for three hours with absolutely nothing to do. And on top of that, she's got teachers that will just say, guess what, we're not having class today. So I don't know how that's happening in that school, but she'll have teachers just say, yep, you're not doing class today. So, you know, no school is perfect and you might hear. You know, from other people, oh, well, my school's doing, you know, every day, you know, following an everyday schedule, but. No school is perfect. No matter what you're hearing, you know, there's always something. So, you know, and I'm certainly not saying that we don't have work to do because I think every school does, but I'm just saying. That while you're following your. Following a schedule that you would do normally in school is not all as packed up to be either, I don't think, from listening to what she's saying. So, I don't know, you know.
Wanted to, thanks, Julia. The reason why I asked is really to. Shed light on. I think the. The challenges and obstacles and the circumstance that every school, including ours, is in. And to, I think to recognize and acknowledge that. You know, we're by far not in normal times.
Right.
And that. Every school, including ours, you know, with our staff, with Mr. Antango, with Ms. Papa Nicolau, Mr. Lazarevic, that. You know, it takes leadership and the coordination of all stakeholders, right? And, you know, the data is being collected. The process is evolving. You know, the situation externally with our. You know, with COVID. With our economic situation around our community. There's a lot going on, it's a complex evolving issue, and so. I just wanted to make sure that when we talk about this, that we. Really put things in perspective so that, you know, the general public, our students, everybody involved that maybe is involved in watching this understands. How abnormal this is and how I think everybody here is doing their best to try to accommodate. The final goal, which is to provide good education, but first with safety and health in mind. Is that fair?
That is very fair, and if I could end with this, we are working really hard to what we have, we're very proud of ourselves. We're making it better, like what I said over and over, remote and hybrid task force, which is the groups that will make these better. Will continue to evolve to have a great product here, to have a great service for our students. Now, I'm going to foreshadow it, when hybrid kicks in, we're going to be in the same boat again, all right? So our response will be the same, we've never been in hybrid. Okay, we're going to collect data. That's cyclical, collect, do and act, and collect some more. That's going to go into effect once we get in hybrid as well, so if I could end with that. Again, our staff, our teachers are doing an outstanding job and I just want to give a shout out to the administrators who are here day in and day out, working long hours to make this possible for our community.
To that, I just wanted to add that, as I recall in the summer when two-point-o was being unveiled. And rolling out, I remember part of the discussion was that it was never really. Even though it was a final product, it was never really going to be a final product because of all the reasons that everyone. Board members and administration discussed, because this is the first time we're all going. At this, and that it was, it was going to be a constant tweaking. Or refining of how education was going to work. And so just. You know, I just wanted to make it clear that. You know, the way I see, see remote learning working is that just because there is refinement going on, just because there is. It's getting amended and retweaked, that doesn't mean that. The initial product that was out there was wrong or wasn't working, but it had to start from some point. And for the most part, I think it has been, that has been very successful. Again, due to everyone's commitment, both the teachers, administration and all the stakeholders. And that just because something gets retweaked, it's because we are, to everybody's point, we're all learning from this, and I think. Everyone's commitment in this is very evident.
Thank you. Our next topic for informational item is our equity report. So far, we have presented reports that incorporated equity in our professional development, PD with our teachers and staff. Finances, how do we support equity through finances, that was shared by Mr. Martin. Student clubs by Principal Lazarevic and the curriculum by Mrs. Papa Nicolau. This evening, we're going to present equity report in regards to restorative justice. You'll hear, as you know, we probably heard it in the news and some of the literatures that we provided you, you know, that school to prison pipeline, right? That's another, something that we really got to take seriously. And ask our question, why are our student of color being suspended much more than other groups and so forth? So our dean has really took the leadership role and basically, in short, hey, look. We have to dean in a different way, okay, it's about the students, it's about relationship and. They prepared a ten-minute, eleven-minute video to talk about restorative justice and how it is definitely a lens towards equity. Jim, take it away, please.
Good evening, everyone, this is Pedro Castro and Jason Madel. Dean's over at Fenton High School, we want to talk with you this evening about FHA's restorative justice equity journey. Before we go into the journey, just wanted to give you an overview of our presentation, we'll be talking about some background data, some background, some data and some research. We'll talk about what is restorative justice, how does restorative justice look at Fenton? We're also going to illustrate our equity journey through the use of restorative justice practices. Before we go into the actual presentation, I would like for you to consider this. The Alliance for Education published a report in twenty thirteen which indicated a ninth grader who is suspended once increase. Increases in times more likely to drop out. So in other words, if a next grader is suspended from school one time, he increases the ability for that student to drop out of school from sixteen to thirty-two percent. A second suspension for that ninth grader increases the risk of dropping out from sixteen to forty-two percent. So for this reason, we think about alternatives to suspension, we want to be able to keep students in the building when it's safe and when it's doable. So here you have some statistics for Fenton Discipline over the last nine years from twenty-ten through twenty-nineteen. I do want to highlight, which is highlighted there for sixteen and seventeen school year. In January of twenty sixteen, Senate Bill one hundred and one. In January of 2016, Senate Bill 101 went into effect. Although we started implementing some of Senate Bill 100 requirements in the fall of 2016, um, it was fully implemented, uh, at least the requirements of the, the bill in 2016 and 2017.
Hey, Jim, can you hear me?
So as far as traditional discipline, I'll just explain what is that. So we here at Fenton use a traditional discipline system that was rooted in rules-based, uh, punitive managerial authoritative approach, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, that did not incorporate student input in terms of running a wrong. I did wanna make a distinction between student input here and student input as it relates to due process. When we talk about due process, students are in the dean's office for a violation of a school policy or a violation of something that has not gone, um, well or didn't go as soon planned. So we want student input, uh, as far as learning what happened, their point of view. That's due process. This student input talks more about writing a wrong. We want students to be involved in process so that they can learn from the mistakes and they can also be part of the process to be able to write that wrong.
Jim is working on the, the blurriness there to make it more focused.
I'm glad that wasn't my eyes.
Amen.
Ju-, just, you know, some, um, comments about restorative justice. Um, I was a dean for about seven years at, uh, another high school and, uh, I wish we had this, um, back in the, you know, early 2000s. Um, this would really have helped a lot of kids, uh, during that time. Um, the way we used to dean during that time is basically it's a scriptbook. You do this, you're suspended for so many days. You do this, you get, you're in school suspended so many days. It really doesn't go to the root issue, why I did what I did. Um, it didn't take into consideration the individual, what they're going through, what their home life is going through, um, uh, what's going on in their life. That's the real critical issues. What's really the root issue that you act that way, that you, you threw that, you know, uh, the chair, uh, or you, you got in a fight or you stole. There's issues behind that and, and, and it's just, um, it's good for everyone, it's good for education to, to start thinking in, in, in that manner. We've, we've, it's, it's, it's evolving. It wasn't always like that. So that's why we're so proud of this, uh, restorative justice, uh, program. We've been trying to get it in the books for a while now and, and it's finals here. Uh, Mr. Castro, Mr. Madel, let's really, um, push forward through that as well as Yoban and, uh, Eileen.
Yeah, I was reading up on it, uh, before the meeting and it discussed how, um, it, it really, what it does is it, it also focus on, uh, reconciliation, um, with, with the, the victims, you know?
Right.
Yeah, and it connects, it connects the victim with the perpetrator or the person that dealt the, the wrong. And it, it almost like connects them in a way that say, hey, this is what happened to me. Okay, I understand, it's, it's, it's interesting.
Good evening, everyone. This is Pedro Castro and Jason Madel. Dean's over at Fenton High School. We wanna talk with you this evening about FHS's restorative justice equity journey. Before we go into the journey, just wanted to give you an overview of our presentation. We'll be talking about some background data, some background, some data and some research. Uh, we'll talk about what is restorative justice? How does restorative justice look at Fenton? We're also gonna illustrate our equity journey through the use of restorative justice practices. Before we go into the actual presentation, I would like for you to consider this. The Alliance for Education published a report in 2013 which indicated a ninth grader who is suspended once increase, increase is two times more likely to drop out. So in other words, if a ninth grader is suspended from school one time, he increases the ability for that student to drop out of school from 16 to 32%. A second suspension for that ninth grader increases the risk of dropping out from 16 to 42%. So for this reason, we think about alternatives to suspension. We wanna be able to keep students in the building when it's safe and when it's doable. So, um, here you have some statistics for kind of discipline, discipline over the last nine years, 2010 through 2019. I do wanna highlight, which is highlighted there for 16 and 17 school year. In January of 2016, Senate Bill 100 went into effect.
Yeah.
Although we started implementing some of Senate Bill 100 requirements in the fall of 2016, um, it was fully implemented, uh, at least the requirements of the, the bill in 2016 and 2017. So as far as traditional discipline, just wanna explain what is that? So we here at Fenton use a traditional discipline system that was rooted in rules-based, uh, punitive managerial authoritative approach, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, that did not incorporate student input in terms of running a wrong. I did wanna make a distinction between student input here and student input as it relates to due process. When we talk about due process, students are in the dean's office for, uh, a violation of a school policy or a violation of something that has not gone, um, well or didn't go as soon planned. So we want student input, uh, as far as learning what happened, their point of view. That's due process. This student input talks more about writing a wrong. We want students to be be involved in the process so that they can learn from the mistakes. And they can also, they can also be part of the process to be able to write that wrong. So, second point here is that, uh, quote from Urban Earth, student accountability fails in a system monitor. And student input is important for student accountability. Uh, without this opportunity, the behavior, the harm is repeated because the root or the initial concern has not been addressed. And this
Board, if, is it okay, we're having technical difficulties? If, we gotta do due justice to this great presentation. It's so important for the district. Jim, let's, let's, let's pass this, table this to, to the next board meeting. Uh, Mr. Castro and, and Mr. Madel has done an outstanding job here. Hopefully we could figure out, uh, the technical difficulties next time. Uh, a little bit disappointed that it's, we can't view this at this time, uh, but we, we gotta give this due diligence in a fair shake. Um, i- if that, if that's okay with you, President Weideman, let's postpone this. This is really a great topic for, uh, for our equity topic here.
I, I think that's a good idea. Let's just table it for hopefully, uh, in the next meeting, cause otherwise we're not doing good.
Forward it to us. Or could you?
We'll do that as well. We'll do that as well. But if we could also present it to, um, to the board, I think the audience should also see that as well, uh, as, as well as our stakeholders.
Very good, yeah.
Does it table it? Cause it's on the agenda?
Say it again.
It wasn't an action item.
I'm sorry I used the wrong, we can just postpone it.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Um, hopefully this one is a little better. This is also a video presentation, uh, it's ramp. Uh, let's take a couple minutes, uh, to, to, we'll take a look at it and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll delay it if, um, if the technology doesn't cooperate as well. Uh, basically this is a, an update from our assistant principal, uh, in the reverse to our counseling department. Jim?
Good evening. Today our goal is to provide you with an overview of the counseling program. My name is Eileen Roberts and I'm the assistant principal. Counselors have begun to do work through the ASCA standards, the American School Counseling Association Curriculum. Our goal and objective is to align our work with the ASCA standards. This program sets up our team to work for mindsets and behaviors that will in turn be the daily work we do with students. As we continue to learn about the requirements that ASCA sets forth, we will continue to hear
It's, it's all right if we postpone, we're having technical difficulty, uh, difficulties here.
Yeah, let's do that. Let me, yeah, just postpone it because otherwise, you know, we need to see it.
That is it for the informational item? President Weideman?
Okay, thank you. Then we'll look forward to those presentations at the, at the, uh, next meeting. So we'll move on to the, um, consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions regarding any items on the consent agenda? All right, if not, then may, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Juliette?
Yeah.
And may I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, Mary Ann, roll call, please.
Peyton Howe?
Yes.
Jaluick? Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes.
And I did, I did see Patty Galuick shake as a yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Motion has passed. Uh, next item is the, on the, is the discussion action items, the 2020 tax levy group. I believe that is yours?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Weideman. Um, if I become blurry, just stop me, folks, and I'll start. Sorry. I just wanted to, uh, recap the tax levy from, from last month. Um, we presented the tentative levy, estimated levy at the last board meeting, October 21st. Um, and the 2020 levy, uh, numbers were presented at that time. We recommended and that, that is unchanged from October to November, that it is, uh, we're recommending a 4.99% increase. And that's over, uh, and above what the 2019 extension was. Um, we're within the 5%, so there's no need to have a, a public, um, uh, hearing, so, uh, that is, does not have to take place. Um, and again, as I said, it's unchanged from October, um, and that's because we, we levy more than the, uh, CPI, uh, rate of inflation. We're entitled to at least 2.3% plus new property. We're not sure if there's any other growth there that we're not aware of, so that's why we kinda put a little bit of a buffer there to make sure we can capture everything the district's legally, uh, entitled to. So, um, we're asking the board to take some action tonight to approve, uh, the levy resolutions presented, uh, before you tonight. And, um, once that, uh, is acted upon, um, the documents will be filed, um, as required with the Cook County, or, excuse me, DePage County Court Office. Um, so with that, I'll, uh, answer any questions that you may have.
How long does it take to, like, if, say, we wanted to apply for a, a larger levy, um, for construction or whatever? How long does that process take or how soon? And how long in advance we need to start that ball?
Well, part of it, um, we had authority from the voters where we were successful with a referendum, for example. Uh, depending on when that happened, there are, uh, periods of time where you can amend your levy. So, um, if it, if it happened, uh, you know, after levy had already been adopted, let's just say we had a successful referendum and, and January we were successful and, and, um, were able to extend, adjust our levy, we could amend it, um, before the final levy were to be extended. Don't quote me on the exact times, but there, there are some provisions where you can amend your levy in between, uh, the time that it's adopted and before it's the final extension occurs. Does that answer your question, Patty?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Patty. Um, then if there are no further questions, may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopts the following 2020 tax levy resolutions and certificate as presented? The resolution authorizing final aggregate tax levy for the year 2020? The resolution authorizing and directing certain special purpose tax levies for the year 2020? And the certificate of compliance with, uh, truth in taxation law?
I'll make the motion, Paul.
All right, thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howe?
Yes. So moved.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Jaluick?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes. All right, has passed. Now we move to the shared services report. And Bruce, that is yours too.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Weideman. Um, this is our, uh, annual report on shared services or outsourcing that the school district, uh, engages in. Um, so, and this is per Illinois school code. Um, we adopt this every year, the board does. Um, so the shared services report and it's part of the annual financial report in our audit as well. So this would be for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2020. Um, and as it says in the report there, it's part of the AFR, um, that our auditors review as well. Um, it's, uh, you know, the, the intent is really to, to display and, and convey, um, all of the, um, collaborative agreements we have, whether it's our, one of our feeder elementary districts or insurance cooperatives, uh, village, uh, collaborations, that type of thing. So it's listed on that second page, as I said, as part of the, um, AFR, annual financial report as well. And the various, uh, services that we engage in are, are listed on that report. Um, so as required, we present this to the board, we'll post it after the board approves it, um, on our website and, uh, we will be in compliance for another year.
All right, any, uh, questions for Bruce? Right, then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the report on shared services for outsourcing for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. May I have a second?
I have a second, Paul.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howe?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Jaluick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Weideman?
Yes. All right, the motion has passed. We move on to the committee reports. Uh, Juliette and Kit, anything on the Bensonville Community Foundation?
I mean, do you have anything to add, Kit? Do you have anything?
We did have the meeting, um, last week and, um, we don't have anything to report as far as new business that I can recall. Um, we, we did welcome our, our new, uh, secretary, who, who, who did a beautiful job in, in, uh, stepping in. So that was, that was one, which is, which is Juliette, so.
Thank you. Oh, we should really say, we should talk about Monica, right?
Oh, sure. Yeah, um, so she's our, uh, she's working on the, uh, partly the finance, uh, she's the finance assistant. So she, you know, she's a graduate of then second year finance student. And so, um, she's getting some experience, um, looking at the, on the finance side, which is the treasurer side of the, of the foundation. So it's pretty good experience for her. She's been really exceptional to work with.
So you better be a good teacher, Kit.
My intention is to do my best, yeah.
All right.
Pressure's on.
All right, great. Thank you, Kit. Thank you, Juliette. The finance committee, right now we not have anything unless you have something, Mary Ann?
No, thank you, I do not.
Okay. IASB delegate, I did attend the 2020 Delegate Assembly Meeting on November 14th. All of the non-binding resolutions that we had discussed at the last meeting were adopted, that were adopted by the Resolutions Committee, did pass and were adopted or not adopted as we discussed at the meeting, so they all went the way that we had agreed to. So the meeting was short, it was approximately only 40 minutes, which is a lot shorter than other years. So, but Fenton was represented and voted at that, was present at that meeting and that's all I have really for the IASB delegate. Len? Does anyone have anything to report for Len?
Nope. The meeting is going to be taking place this coming Friday.
This Friday, okay. All right, then maybe we'll have something on the next meeting. Nedsec, Leo and Patty?
Well, I was attending the meeting, so it was James. More or less, we find out about the replacement for the financial advisor that she is leaving and we more or less have a virtual view of the classroom link. So far, it's really well maintained and properly, I'm gonna say financially responsible for the people are taking care and they are doing a great job.
Okay. All right, thank you, Leo. And the Policy Committee, I mean, yeah, there's nothing new there unless Patty or Kit, do you have anything to add?
No, there's nothing.
At our policy.
Right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next board meeting, next virtual board meeting is Wednesday, December 16th at 2020, 2020 at 7:00 PM. So that will be our next meeting. Then we move on to closed session. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this Act 5 ILCS 120/2C1 and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
I make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Jaluick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Leo, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Weidemann?
Yes. Okay, we will be in closed session. Jim, if you could let us know when we're in closed session? Passed. And Jim, let us know when we're back in open session.
Ready to go.
Okay, we are back in open session. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you, Jackie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kit. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jaluick?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Leo? Turn your mic on. You're on mute, Leo.
Mute, yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Weidemann?
Yes. All right, everyone, have a good night, stay safe. We'll see you next time. Any questions, let me know.
You, too.